Good morning. I'll officially call to order the regular meeting of Coachella Valley Water District Board of Directors, May 28, 2024, here in Coachella. And would you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Yes, good morning, President Powell.
Here.
Vice President Estrada.
Here.
Director Bianco.
Here.
Director Aguilar.
Here.
And we will note for the record when Director Nelson arrives.
Thank you. I'll go this way. Do we have, yeah, do we have any additions, deletions, or adjustments to today's agenda?
Yes, our staff has asked to move Item 12C to, which is on closed session, to a subsequent meeting.
Oh. Okay.
And I'll take the, that was my error. It should have originally been for the 611, and I failed to make that.
Okay, got you. Fair enough. Yeah, there was no back, backup materials on that anyways. Is there anybody from the public wishing to make a comment at this time?
We do. We have Mr. Ed Luna, I believe, if you can, please come up to the podium.
Morning, Mr. Luna.
Good morning.
Hope you're well.
My pleasure to be here, and I want to thank you for this opportunity as well. Lately, it's kind of been announced or discussed about the problem, or lack of governance, representation in our energies with the Imperial Irrigation District. And I'm here to thank those members of this board who have joined the Coachella Valley Energy Commission in their meetings and making their presence known that they are indeed, if you will, representatives who serve us in that particular regard. And by that, I mean, I'm reflecting on the district's, the district's own agreement on the energy lease agreement, if you will, or the points on that. So in a sense, I see that we do have representation. And I look forward to engaging with more people, as well as the Coachella Valley Energy Commission, besides this board, and trying to convince them that we do have representation. Because without you guys, our agricultural economy would have just gone downhill. And because of you guys, we have had this existing energy lease agreement with the IID, which has kept our businesses, corporate and locally owned, flourishing, thriving, and moving forward. So all I'm asking you today is take into consideration the possibility, or my perspective, that is, that you are indeed representing us today, and hopefully, you'll continue to do so once the agreement that you reached back in 1934, a settlement agreement that you reached with the IID, once that expires, and hopefully beyond 2033, we can come up with a new revised, improved, and updated agreement that'll continue to serve us in the future and move us forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Just let the board know, Mr. Luna is a former CBWD employee.
Thank you.
Yeah, of course. Yeah, thank you. Anybody else from the public wishing to comment at this time? For the consent calendar, we see Items 5A through K. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I'll make a motion to approve.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passed 5A. 7A, Rondo Engineering. This is the authorized solicitation of bids for the Youngs' farmland in Phase 1 of the nonpotable improvement projects. I know it's a big one, but you had to kind of spend some time with this one, Rondo. I know we've talked about it a lot, too. Go ahead.
Thank you. Greatly appreciate the time and effort that you have devoted to this very important project. And I would like to stress that really, it is two projects. The first project is the Youngs' nonpotable connection. It's about $1.2 million. And then it is the second project that really is of magnitude, which is a Warp 7 Phase 1 nonpotable water improvements. That's in the neighborhood of $25.7 million. And so it is quite the fork in the road where we want to see where Warp 7 and how we deal with the effluent and nonpotable water, not only now, because there is existing demand, but also where we want to take it next. And as you stated, yes, this is, board action is to request authorization to go out to bid for two projects, as I mentioned, the Youngs' family nonpotable water, and also the Warp 7 Phase 1 nonpotable water improvements. And so I'm very pleased to present this project to you. It is a critical project within sanitation. It is part of our Warp 7 work plan, which I'll talk about it more with the regional board. And so we're looking upon your guidance so that we can continue with expanding on nonpotable water, but then it also contributes to sustainability and environmental stewardship of this project. So overall, what is this project? We will be expanding the tertiary capacity from 5MGD. I'm sorry, we were expanding from 2.5MGD to 5.5MGD. Also, we will be doing a new pump station at myopost 113-2, which is, I'm sorry for the clarity, but is right at the northeast corner of the very dark Shadow Hills East Golf Course. It is a pump station that is quite old, about 27 years old. And so we need to be able to expand that canal delivery to Warp 7. From Warp 7, we're able to then deliver nonpotable water. In addition to that, we'd be looking at expanding storage. And also, like I said, we'd be able to connect Youngs' family farm as well. And a lot of these improvements are required because really, there is not enough capacity, tertiary capacity, to meet existing customer base, let alone future. And I'll talk about this more. But then also, we're trying to make sure that we have redundancy and sustainability with our nonpotable water delivery to Warp 7, which we do have concerns. And then we need to be able to expand storage. And so just a quick overview as regards to who are our low-hanging fruit, like who are we going to expand tertiary water? Well, we have here in green, Sun City Del Webb, and that we can actually provide more nonpotable water, but our aged infrastructure does not allow us. In addition to you, there is the Shadow Hills Club Course, which we call Southeast, which is dark blue. During the peak summer months, we need to stop delivery of recycled nonpotable water, recycled water to that golf course, because Del Webb takes it all and only basically becomes a canal customer. But then also, to the right of Madison, we have Shadow Hills South, what we call Southeast. And then we have the Shadow Hills Country Club North Course. When you look at existing demand, both on Del Webb and Shadow Hills West, you know, you're looking at 3,900 acre feet. When you're looking at the proposed customers that we would like to connect, we're at 2,423 acre feet. So with existing and proposed demand, we are trying to target 6,232 acre feet. And that's with maximizing existing delivery to Del Webb, connecting Talavera, connecting Shadow Hills High School, and then improving the efficiency of delivery to Shadow Hills Country Club Southwest, but then also converting those canal customers on the east side of Madison, which is Shadow Hills Country Club North Course and Shadow Hills Country Club East Course, so that we're able to expand recycled water. That is the footprint. That is our low-hanging fruit. We have used this term quite extensively within our sanitation, nonpotable water engineers, is this target, who our neighbors are, because that's where it generates the cheapest alternative. There are some challenges with just continuing with the status quo. We have had years of experience, I'm sure Lydia can attest to this, in regards to why can't we just continue? And, well, like I said, Del Webb, they have really high peaks. And if we were able to have a magical wand, no problem, let's do 8MGD, we'll be able to deliver it. But we don't. There's a cost associated. There's a cost associated with those improvements to deliver 8MGD, but that's their peak during summer months. But then also, there's a limitation on the effluent coming in. So that's one challenge. We're not able to meet the Del Webb existing demand. Also, for the Shadow Hills West, Southwest, we have to stop, like I said, nonpotable water delivery to the dark blue customer and solely provide canal. And then there is existing limitations within the nonpotable water customers. So not only do we have not a hard time delivering, but then we have a hard time producing the tertiary water. And no fault to nobody, it's just we're doing the best we can with the infrastructure that we have. And those limitations really is comes to, we cannot treat all the effluent that comes in. I believe I ran the numbers, and this is just last year's numbers, and all those numbers are, if I'm able to express them, are last year's, which was a wet year. You know, as you get drier, these numbers get worse. And I really tried to look at last year, just because it was, the data was fresh, the data was there, and it was available, but recognized that it was a wet year. And so for the ability for us to deliver recycled water, in essence, 37% of it goes to our disposal, 63% goes to our existing base. And there's some reasons why we do that. I wish we had more capacity within the tertiary. I wish we were able to depend more on the myopost 113 canal, so we can be more on the high 90s. That'd be awesome if we're able to do that. And I think we can, within a very short time, or at least within my career time, to be there. But yes, the tertiary is rated at 2.5MGD within Warp 7. But if you really try to maximize that improvements to 2.5, sometimes you turn the knob a little bit more, crank it a little bit more, you're not able to even get 2.5. If you're just maxing out, you're about 2.2MGD. And then of that 2MGD, you've got to take a good chunk, as shown on our Table 1, because you need that recycled water to basically operate Warp 7. And so that's where it comes. We have 3MGD coming in, but we really can only produce 2.1MGD. And so there is that 37%. So two buckets go out, one bucket goes to the percolation pond. And so that's a concern that is even more prevalent when we have the hot months, where we have a huge demand and we experience those 8MGD peaks that Del Webb really wants us to meet. And then, as I said, there's the myopost 113, not always able to deliver canal water from the northeast corner of Shadow Hills West to Warp 7, because it is a 27-year-old pump. Our operations does a great job in trying to maintain them, but whatever the tag on the GPM rated, we're not just getting it. So it's already at the end of its useful life. So really, what is, what am I saying? What I'm trying to say, I'm trying to plead, and you can tell my voice, and I promise you, I'm not going to talk about no station wagon. But it really is about not enough storage. We don't have the storage within Warp 7 to be able to just produce and then store it and then take it out so that we can offset some of the low demand to peak demands, because we do have an inverse relationship where in the summer, we have a high peak, but then we have low effluent, and winter's reverse. So we need more storage to be able to account for that. And then we need more tertiary than we have. And then we also have a failing pump station that we need to address. So by addressing these limitations, we're able to serve the existing customers, but then also the future customers that we have. And like I said, there is demand here. Sun City Del Webb has been a great customer since 1997. We've been able to not meet their agreement. There's an agreement that we have for a total of 4MGD. We can't meet it, not with what we have now, because of the limitations I just stated. And then also, there is customers south of Warp 7, Shadow Hills, and I said those, Shadow Hills Southwest, Shadow Hills Southeast, and then Shadow Hills Northwest. But then there's also other customers, Talavera, Youngs', which our plans have been ready since 2020. He was one of the first customers who really knocked on our door and said, "Rondo, can you do something? I know you deliver to a web. I know your pipeline passes. Can you deliver it?" And so that's why, he's one of the reasons that he's included in this regional project, because we were able to really listen to his need and his desire to get recycled water. And I was excited because it was going to be our first farm. So there's going to be a willing player, and we were going to learn a lot in regards to how do we do that? How do we keep an organic growth and then also meet their demands, but then also find a home for our effluent, which we must. So in regards to the new customers, I think I stated, there's just, I can't repeat enough, there's not enough storage, not enough treatment.
So, Rondo, yeah, no need to repeat. So on the farmland there, is it using well water, or is it using Colorado River water?
On the farmland south?
Well, I'm talking to Youngs' and whoever's around there.
Good question. I had it.
I believe they're using groundwater, and that's one of the reasons why that they want to get on the effluent, is they were paying the east rack, and then they were going through this process to get the effluent water. And it was realized that the boundary for the east and west was on their east side. And so they had to then start.
Paying the west.
They had to then start to pay the west rack, and it was very expensive. So they've been waiting four years now to try and get this.
That's what I remember also.
Thank you, Director Nelson. So there is consequences, if I may continue. There are second consequences, consequences in regards to not doing these improvements. For one, I drive this site, and I don't like to see that, you know, we have effluent and we just put it in the ground. For me, it's well-treated. It's a revenue loss. It's a lost opportunity. And there's sustainability there and environmental stewardship that we really have to address. But then also, we have made a commitment to the Water Quality Control Board in regards to what our vision for Warp 7 is. And they have, one, elected to look at our total nitrogen limit and question it, but then they have given us an opportunity to say, "Well, if you don't want to put a lot of emphasis on total nitrogen of 10, you can develop a work plan. And you can guarantee me, the Regional Water Board, how you're able not to load the groundwater by doing land disposal." So we made a commitment within our work plan that we were going to, A, expand Warp 7 iteration, which we're doing hopefully here soon. Second, that we will continue our nonpotable water expansion. And Warp 7 Phase 1 is critical, because we need that capacity and we need that storage. And so that we are able to get to pretty much a zero percolation environment here soon, within four or five years. And so that's our commitment. Another commitment, part of the Warp 7 work plan, is that we have to be able to build storage, because not all the time, you're going to have irrigation demand. There's going to be weather days that you'll be able to sustain that effluent and store it, and then when the rain has come and gone, and then you come back and recycle it and meet the demand that we have here pictured on this board. So there is some consequences here associated with not doing the improvements.
Here, Rondo, the amount of storage that you're ultimately going to have, how many days of production would that handle?
I smile, because, you know, you really have to look at weather patterns, and, or the past five years, it's been very challenging to be able to account for these high-intensity, short-duration, and at times it flips the next year, sometimes it's very low-intensity, long-duration. If I had to put a pencil down and calculate, which I have in the past, I would target somewhere in the seven-day storage in regards to an ability. And some would question me in regards to, why not 21? That was our standard before. But even on a wet year or a wet event, there's still a little bit of demand that goes out, and we still have to be able to treat. We also have to be able to process tertiary water, because we have to run a process plant. So that takes a demand. Because flows are really low, like 3.1MGD, you kind of use a lot in our, on our processes, this recycled water demand. So if I had to answer your question directly, it could be between seven and 10 days. So it's somewhere in that neighborhood.
Okay, thank you.
Rondo, I have a question. Thank you, by the way, for this presentation. Can you go over again the sources of financing for this project?
Absolutely. So our team with Carrie's support, I don't know when it happened, but we made a U-turn about seven years ago or so, and we said, "We will expand nonpotable water, but we really can't just do pay-go." So we've been actively trying to seek loans and grants so that we can fund these very heavy improvements. They're heavy to the sanitation budget, not only here, but in Warp 10. I'm sure you heard Carrie in her presentation that these are significant projects, but they really are legacy projects. It is, we are at the fork in the road. We really got to commit. But to answer your question directly, we did apply for the Clean Water State Revolving Fund, and the project was 26.9, and that was a combined project, both the regional and Youngs' family. And so we have $5 million in grant. Also, we have $2 million in water demand offset fee. And we're also applying here in September. They just reviewed our last report and had very minor comments. And usually, that's a good sign in regards to we're heading in the right direction in regards to the WIN grant, and we expect to have another 6.8 million. So with six, five, and the offset fee, I mean, that's, I think, a good shore up to our project in addition to the sanitation fee. Did I answer a question?
Yeah, thanks. If you do not get the additional grant money, can you still move forward?
Absolutely. We already talked to the Regional Water Quality Control Board, and we advised them that we're also applying for WIN. If we get 6.8 million, then that loan just comes down.
Okay.
And we just have to do a budget of that.
Okay, good. That's good. Thank you.
So just in closing, the project is, one, connect Youngs' farm, a willing player, very active in regards to calling us sporadically throughout the year, not just one time. We have included his connection as part of this loan grant. And also, the second part is the regional, is a really, is a regional project where we want to expand tertiary to 5.5MGD. We want to be able to provide that storage from what we have 0.8MGD to 5.5MGD, and then do aligned with 12MGD as well, to get us to that seven-day in steps as well. And then we want to be able to shore up the pump station that it has already been past its time at 27 years. And I believe there's a lot of benefits, more than anything is that we are able to meet any regulatory scrutiny associated with what is our future Warp 7. And we have had a good support from the state in regards to loans and grants to move forward with this project.
So there's this other property that's right next to Warp 7. It's called Desert Retreat. It's going to be, I believe, a housing community, a newly-built housing community. Are we talking to them about doing dual piping?
We are talking to them in regards to providing nonpotable water, and they want to connect. We have had a couple of development meetings. We haven't yet penciled whether this is going to be dual, or this is just going to be all the HOA landscape?
So, yeah, just so you could do the landscaping for, in the houses, and still be on domestic?
They're really much dependent on us to connect, and that's part of the 6.362 acre feet a year. So that is my presentation. I'd be more happy to answer further questions the board may want to ask.
Thank you.
Well, no, at the last meeting, I think we were trying to get a sense of the cost per acre foot of water. And I think that was one of the things that, I think we were trying to get a sense of how much is it costing for us to supplement this water, but then I think we also wanted to get a sense of like the cost avoidance. And then given everything that happened with the recent board meeting at the Regional Water Quality Control Board, do you feel like we've made further commitments to do something here? And then if we had to scale this down to maybe check off all the boxes that we're trying to check off, is this, could we scale this down, or would it be kind of a waste if we didn't go to this magnitude now?
Good questions, Director Estrada. Warp 10, the Warp 10 permit renewal with the Regional Quality Control Board, let me publicly say thank you to Zoe, she did a great job navigating us through that permit, because I did see it as a challenge. There's huge cost implications if they would enforce a TDS and a total nitrogen of 10 at Warp. We would, in essence, have to stop our nonpotable water program and refocus our attentions in regards to meeting total nitrogen of 10. That was key decision-making that was done by Carrie and Zoe's group to shepherd us through, and we'll be okay. We have a path now associated with continuing our nonpotable water expansion. Here, we're a little bit ahead in that we already have a work plan. We already stated that we are going to commit to nonpotable water. We already stated that we are going to commit to non-potable water. And we have identified these customers and we have identified this demand. So I think in regards to Warp Seven, if we are able to commit to this Warp Seven Phase One non-potable water tertiary expansion project that is in keeping with our promise to them that we are good environmental stewards and are going to stop our percolation land disposal efforts.
So, so, so all the, so you're calling this Phase One. How many phases are there?
We anticipate there could be two phases. Phase One is let's get the capacities in regards to tertiary. Let's fix our A-Link canal pump station. And then let's learn from Young's in regards to his delivery. And then let's go back to the state. There's a lot of customers here. Let's put some applications together, some funding applications, and hopefully submit here by the end of the year so that we are able to get additional grants, additional loans. So that'll be Phase Two. And that'd be a separate.
And here, you're showing the total project. This is Phase One and Phase Two?
To, as of today, it's just Phase One and Young's.
So that, this exhibit here, that's just Phase One?
I'm sorry for that. So this is all phases?
All combined, right? And Phase Two is mostly the pipe?
Phase Two will be connecting Talavera.
Yeah.
Polte, which is south of Warp Seven. Also connecting Shadow Hills Golf Courses, both north, south, and west, connecting the Shadow Hills.
Okay, I see that. I see future Phase Two is the purple. And imagine you're running one pipe to.
Yeah, we tried to color code so that you can tell which one, what kind of water did it receive. So I'm sorry, I should have explained that. So the light blue is all canal.
And this exhibit, this, we've included this in the work plan that we've submitted to the regional board?
Not in this particular exhibit, but we have included their demands and connection points.
Is it all of this, or is this bigger, or is?
I will have to get back to you, but the majority of the funding within the work plan to get us to zero discharge is this.
And, but we've said that to the regional board in the work plan that we're trying to get to zero?
Right.
That's what we've said?
Correct.
All right, so the request is to, for us to authorize a solicitation of bids for this. Is there a motion to approve that?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? I think that passed 5-0.
Thank you very much.
All right. Hopefully we get some good bids.
Yes.
I get worried about that.
Me too.
Yeah, no, it's it'll swing the other way at some point, but my gosh. All right, so next is soliciting bids for this switchboard upgrade project at Warp 10, or at this facility.
So I apologize, I'm here asking for more money. But this is a smaller one.
Yeah, a lot smaller.
It's a lot smaller. In essence, what are we aiming here? So we want to be able to build resiliency within our electrical infrastructure, specifically the infrastructure that supports the operations building. There is a switchgear and generator that we would like to improve just because it is already past its time. I think, believe it's built in 1994. And there's been additional loading that we have seen. One is solar panels, second, electrical vehicles. And so we want to be able to provide additional reliability and not depend on this very absolute system. That, for me, the most pressing issue is that there is faults within the grounding. And so it really puts our operations building at a dire risk. And so we're asking for, I believe, 534,000 to do this project. And very little will be spent this year with the majority of funding next year. And this will be paid through our Pago with general district funding. So we're seeking approval to go out to bid for this project. Our guys have done a great job doing design in-house, so we have saved a little bit of money there. And we're hoping to capture some of that value and go out to bid. With that, I'll close and see if there's any questions by the board.
I have no questions, John. I'll move approval.
I'll second. And when it said switchboard, I thought it was, had to do with phones and things like that. I'm going, what?
It sounds like it is.
But when it got to the electrical part, I was on board a bit, so.
I hope this new one that we put in lasts longer than 30 years.
We'll do our best to maintain it.
Yeah, fair enough. So we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Passed 5-0. Thanks, Armando. So this, where's Jeff?
He's just got that.
I'm going to recuse on, yeah, he doesn't, I don't know, maybe he needs to be here for that. I hadn't mentioned this earlier to him, but just by having a real property interest directly adjacent to the project, I will recuse and hand the gavel to Vice President Strata.
Okay, moving on to item C, Armando.
So the purpose of this board item is to request authorization to execute a professional service agreement with Docking Engineering in the amount of $1,545,530 for design, engineering services, and environmental support for what we're calling the Valley View Trunk Sewer Project. And if I can just take a moment here and let me see if I can look at this map. And so we have about 14 mobile home parks. And the goal is really to do septic to sewer conversion. And so we're trying to build a gravity line on Cactus Drive, which is the very first from left, from left to right. Cactus Drive, the red line. And then Fillmore. And then also take that Fillmore up along to the Soto de Leon Ranch. In addition to try to captureize the Vista North Estates, the Yosino Mobile Home Park, De Leon Housing, Duran Farms here to the south. We have been working extensively with the state. And collateral report that I'm not asking for money, well, I am asking for money, but we do have a grant with the Regional Water Control Board to pay for the full design and construction at the $214.2 million. So the project will provide sanitation, centralized sanitation service. It's like I stated, Airport Boulevard, Desert Cactus, Avenue 57. And then we're going to drain all these properties. And we're going to install a lift station here at the southwest corner of Avenue 57 and Desert Cactus. We have met with the property owner, he's very willing to help us out in regards to siding the lift station because then he also benefits from that sanitation infrastructure. Like I said, this project is utilizing a grant funding for septic to sewer conversion. And it will expand sanitation service to all these mobile home parks. I would like to say that this is the same targeted group that we're working with, the domestic water. And so we're just coming back and filling the gap with regards to our services. Now, we want to provide domestic water, but we also want to be able to be good stewards to our neighborhood and provide sanitation. And we did go out with an RFP back in March 2024. We did have a non-mandatory meeting that was well-attended. But unfortunately, we only received four bids, which nowadays, I'm ecstatic to receive more than two. And those bids came in at 1.2 to 2.1. We did rank the four proposals of regards to cost, performance qualifications of the firm. And the highest ranking consultant was Docking Engineering. Docking Engineering is the same folks that are doing the domestic water improvements. And so we really scrutinized their fee and said, wait a minute, you're doing this again on the sanitation side. You've done it already once in the domestic water side. There are some economies of scale here. Can you go back and revise your proposal? And they have submitted a revised proposal from 1.2 to 1 million, in essence, to get us in design. So we are recommending that we take this step to execute a PSA with Docking Engineering for the design service for the Valley View Trunk Sewer Project. I'll hold my presentation to see if there's any questions associated with this project.
I had a question for Jeff on this. So there was a, there was a lower bid, I think, in this. We, then we went back to Docked, we negotiated with them, and we had another lower bid. Is this a, is this a risk to that other bidder?
Right, so because this is a professional contract for services, there would not be that level of process. And so there is flexibility in terms of receiving bids and going back to, back to a bidder, if I got it right, to get a better price or to sharpen pencils. The bottom line is that the standard is that was in the best interests of the district in terms of finances and in terms of a staff and that can work with your staff in terms of coming forward with the project. So these bidders would have anticipated, or should have anticipated, that they could be talked to after the bid process to sharpen their pencils, or to change their scope, or to come up with a different price.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, and I think it's good to point out that Docking's already doing a tremendous amount of work, basically in the same alignment, same areas. So it would make sense that you could approach them and ask them to sharpen pencils and look at numbers again.
Yeah, that makes a lot of sense. I agree.
Any other questions?
No, it's a great project and complements the great work on the potable water in the region. So this goes along with, you know, what we've just approved over at Warp Seven. And this will be for Warp Four, more supply, as it were. So I think it's great, and I'd move approval.
Will the rest of the area, as growth goes on, be able to be connected to this?
Yeah, absolutely. We're going to be rightsizing the project to the growth that we anticipate within this region, yes, absolutely.
Great, there's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is a second. Hold this in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So Mr. Powell just had a phone call.
All right.
With a request that you just proceed to the next item. Vice President.
Thank you.
What do you say? Okay.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Should we, oh, there we go.
Yeah, he's gonna, well, it looks like he came back, so. Thanks.
Good morning, President Powell and members of the board. My name is Jared Dawson. I am a Water Resources Associate here at CVWD. And today I am bringing forward the water supply assessment for the Classic Club Specific Plan Amendment. It should be noted that this specific plan was previously named the North Star Project. However, as part of this amendment, or the specific plan amendment, the name of the project will be changing from the North Star Specific Plan to the Classic Club Specific Plan. So for the sake of this presentation, I'll be referring to the project as the Classic Club Specific Plan. Additionally, this WSA was prepared in compliance with the requirements set forth in SB 610 and SB 1262. The Classic Club Specific Plan is located in the central portion of the Coachella Valley within the unincorporated Thousand Palms area in Riverside County, as depicted here in the regional location and vicinity maps. The original specific plan identified 10 distinct planning areas, of which three have already been fully developed and constructed. Planning Area One is the Classic Club Golf Course. Planning Area Two is the Classic Club Clubhouse Facility. And Planning Area Three is the Accra Sure Arena and Event Center. Because Planning Areas One, Two, or Planning Areas One, Two, and Ten have been fully developed, they will not be a part of this WSA. And instead, we will be focusing on the undeveloped Planning Areas Three through Nine. Planning Areas Three through Nine have various land use designations to include commercial tourist, mixed-use, very high residential, and commercial retail. That will total 165.2 acres. The projected estimated dwelling units for Planning Areas Three through Nine is 1,105, with an additional 782,000 square feet of non-residential building area. As stated previously, Planning Areas Three through Nine total 165.2 acres. The projected indoor residential demand is 181.5 acre feet per year. The indoor commercial and industrial demand is projected at 110.29 acre feet per year. The projected outdoor irrigation demand is 175.95 acre feet per year. And the outdoor recreational demand is 44.61 acre feet per year projected. Total, that gets us to 512.35 acre feet per year projected for Planning Areas Three through Nine, which totals 3.1 acre feet per acre. With that, I will conclude my presentation with staff recommending approval of the water supply assessment for the Classic Club Specific Plan Amendment. And I would be happy to answer any questions about the WSA or the project itself.
Thank you, Jared. Are you new?
Yes, sir.
Welcome. Maybe I missed the introduction part when I was outside the room, but welcome, good presentation. Is this project in the county of Riverside, or is it?
Yes, sir. The county of Riverside is the lead agency.
Okay, yeah, that's true. I saw in the general manager report, I think this is listed under the Cathedral City projects, and so I was like, hmm.
Well, it's in their, it's in their sphere.
In their sphere, yeah, yeah.
And there's currently a debate of whether it should be in Cathedral City or Palm Desert, so.
Yeah, but currently it's in the county of Riverside, so they're the lead agency. That's good to know. On this, high, very high density, I know this probably has nothing to do with the water supply assessment. But how tall is, are these buildings? Because 30 units per acre is a lot.
I cannot answer the exact height of the buildings or how many floors there are, but it was proposed that it's multi-story. But to get into the specifications.
Yeah, it's kind of irrelevant. I just, I mean, obviously with that kind of footprint, you don't use a lot of water. Yeah, I bet it's three or four. Who knows? Okay.
John, I have a question, please.
Go ahead, please.
So I know this is not part of your assessment, but I am concerned about the, well, my question is, how will the, the future impact of any storm drain issues associated with this build-out? Are those addressed in the land just approvals? Because there are already issues on that, on that side with drainage, storm drainage. So how is that to be addressed in the future? Kerry?
I will go ahead and let Kerry answer that one.
Yeah, this was one.
So when the golf course was built, the Classic Club Golf Course, that was designed as a stormwater channel and to carry the flows coming from the Thousand Palms area. And once the, at the southeast corner, the Classic Club Golf Course ties into our Thousand Palms Channel project to continue to capture those flows and get them over to the Sun City Del Webb. So we are working, you know, closely with. So we are working, you know, closely with the Burger Foundation on the Thousand Palms Flood Control Project. But basically, the facilities already exist within this development to carry the flows.
So is it build out the, to the east?
It will.
There would be, where would the water flow?
Well, where, where Avenue Thirty-eight is right now, there's going to be a channel there. And so we're looking.
Going to be, okay.
Yeah, as part of the Thousand Palms Regional Flood Control Project.
Okay.
Yeah.
That helps. Thanks, Carrie.
Okay.
Another question, and I'm sure it was in the detailed report. I only read the summary, so we have the summary here and it's not in it. What are the sources of water for this project? I, I believe the golf course is using recycled water.
Yes, sir. The, the current planning areas receive water from our non-potable water system. They're also a rack customer and part of the domestic system as well.
Okay, and do we have a breakdown of the, this five hundred and twelve acre feet of where that's gonna come from?
Yes, it's projected that all of the demand for those specific planning areas will come from the domestic system, as I believe the non-potable water system is mainly focused towards the actual golf course itself. And they actually did mention that there's a potential for some additional water, not additional water, but continued usage of the pumped water as well.
Right, okay. I mean, it seems like there's a, I don't know if there's an opportunity for more non-potable here. I mean, they have outdoor irrigation of a hundred and seventy-five acre feet, which is, it's not huge. I mean, the, the numbers aren't bad, right? I'm just trying to get a sense of it. Three point one is, that'd be a little lower, but that's, it's a little higher than what I expected, to be honest with you.
Yeah, yes. As Zoe just mentioned, it is, there is areas zoned for high density residential, which obviously will play into the factor of having a higher target densities. And also in addition to that, the multi-story aspect of it will create higher densities and therefore.
Yeah. Yeah, so the use per unit might not be high, but the use per acre is, because they have a lot of units on an acre, yeah.
Correct.
All right, that makes sense. I, I, that's all right.
And those are all policy decisions that could be made at the time of an actual application for service. This is just more of what are the for, the sources of water that could be used? We're not committing to serving this area. We're simply being part of the sequel process for the county.
Right, so you're not, so you didn't plug in any recycled water into this five hundred and twelve acre feet demand?
No, sir.
Yeah, it looks like it's strictly a water budget, right?
Yeah.
I mean, this may change. I mean, this is, this is a long ways away.
Probably.
Yeah, I think so.
Fair enough, all right. Well, I'm sure they, they, I mean, they met all the requirements.
How, how long are they good for?
The approved water supply assessments are good or acceptable for five years. And then, so every five years, we review the WSAs that will be expiring that year.
Do they have to come back to us and ask for approval after five years?
Yes.
We, yes, sir, we reach out to the project itself every five years to make sure that there is no changes in water supply demand for the project until they've completed construction. Once they've completed construction, then we will, I don't believe that we reach out to them any further.
Right, but, but it's on them to say, hey, ours is expiring. Can we have a new one? It's not on us to go out and tell them.
No, and a lot of these projects, five years later, kind of go dormant.
I just want to offer a quick clarification. Technically, water supply assessments do not expire. A new water supply assessment is triggered if the project has changed significantly or if the sources and status of our water supply has changed. However, we do proactively, as Jared stated, review them every five years and reach out to the developers to make sure that there hasn't been any significant changes.
But once you have this, you can't, this, this, this project can't, can't lie dormant for twenty years and then someone come and say, I was assessed water, this much water, and I want to build my project twenty years later and you've already approved it.
So theoretically, if the project does not require further sequel analysis, because the original analysis meets requirements, technically, they don't require a new water supply assessment. So it's more of a policy decision. And our policy is that as these age out and our supply conditions are changing, we will require them to do a new one. And I believe this is a perfect example. The original water supply assessment for the North Star Specific Plan was dated two thousand and six. So now as they're looking to develop and change land uses within the remaining planning areas, they approached us with exactly that same question. And the answer was, things have changed sufficiently that we are recommending that you prepare a new water supply assessment. And usually, you know, the developers want to do the right thing in terms of that to make sure that their sequel analysis is properly supported. And so they worked with us to develop a new water supply assessment.
Right, but this is no, this is simply to check a box for the secret required by the county. It's no commitment on the water district to provide service now or in the future. They have to go through the usual process to get that approval.
Well, it sort of is a commitment. It's, it's what we're saying, that the water's available. If you want to build your project, we're gonna give it to you. We couldn't, we couldn't, we couldn't just come and say no to it after, after.
No, no, you could, though. I, I think.
It's not a will serve.
I think what, what you would do, and this could come into this idea of an expiration date, would be if, let's say we end up in an overdraft situation that looks difficult to solve in the, you know, in, in, in a period of time, that we would go to them and say, the water supply conditions have changed and we need to look at your water supply assessment. I mean, that, to me, that's the most likely, I mean, they, they make a big change, like what they were doing over at, at the surf park in Lakina, right? They actually.
The surf park that was gonna use less water as a surf park than as the.
Yeah, they went to the back to the golf course.
Golf course.
Which was already approved, yeah, I know. So, so I think we do have, but I think based on water supply conditions, we do have the ability to sort of require a new water supply assessment.
Or that prior to service, you need to obtain a certain amount of water or do something else.
Do something else, yeah. Okay, didn't know that. So who's the project proponent exactly? It's, it's not the Burger Foundation, right? It's, is it somebody else?
So.
It's in the, I, I don't have that in front of me.
So.
As far as, as far as we know, the, the landowners are still the Burgers, but we work directly with their consultant, MSA, unless so directly with the developer. But whether they're gonna, you know, like, it happens sometimes. I think other specific plans, they.
No, I'm just thinking, you know, I know they, they've acquired other property that's not part of this, that's adjacent. So this is just one, the next, the next phases, I guess, of their, of their projects. Fair enough. So the Burger Foundation's still involved? Yeah, fair enough. Is there a motion to approve this water supply assessment?
I'd, so move.
I'll second.
You? Pretty clean run for a first time, by the way.
Appreciate it.
So we have a, we have a motion and a second. Hold on, favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Pass five oh.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks, Jared.
Good job.
Yeah, these, I say they always go dormant after a while, but things are popping over there, but around that.
No kidding.
So they, these guys might actually get it done. It's not clear to me, are the Firebirds still, do they still have a chance to get to the finals?
Oh, yeah, 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 they're in the, they're in the.
I swear I heard that they.
Yeah, they're in the Pacific Finals.
I thought, I heard they were playing for some other thing and I'm like.
No, they're in the finals.
They're in it, right?
Well, it's not the Calder Cup Finals. They're in the Pacific League Finals. So if they win this, then they go to the Calder Cup.
Oh, okay.
Oh, I thought this was the final.
Right, right. So it's a final, but it's not.
So they still have a path to get to the, they have a path to get to the.
They have a path to get. If our, if our coach doesn't leave us.
He already left.
Is he gone?
Yeah, he's, he, we haven't left yet, but he got hired.
Can he, can he like finish our season here? I mean, the Kraken aren't playing.
This is totally related to this water supply assessment. The most important part. Yeah, have to win.
No, how goes, how goes the Kraken, how goes the Kraken, goes that, that project's up there? How goes the Firebirds?
Firebirds, yeah. Fair enough. Eight A written communications? I didn't see anything.
Yes, there was one that came in and a copy was distributed. From Doctor Time.
No, it's a good, consistent.
That's not in there, is it? Oh, right, oh, you're right, I saw that. I did see that. Yeah, no, I saw it. I just didn't see it attached on the, on the, online. Right, yeah, okay. We have Robert Chang with our update on the strategic plan. Good morning, Robert.
Good morning, sir. Welcome back and good morning to all the other board members. It's good? Okay. As usual, you know, every quarter, we try to give the board a status update on what's happening with the, the strategic plan. And again, I'll just make some high-level comments on this. So I guess to get to the bottom line, for quarter three, which concluded in March of this year, nine projects hit the green mark. Five were, you know, kind of missed the, the quarterly update, or I'm sorry, the quarterly benchmarks, but will be completed. So didn't really, the status didn't really change too much. It improved a little bit. I think one, one of the projects actually switched from yellow to green. And that's the environmental mitigation project, I think, in the second strategic goal area, the water quality environmental leadership. That, so that's fell under Joanne's area. So again, all fourteen projects are slated to be completed by the end of this year or the end of this fiscal year, by June. I can certainly, you know, try to answer detailed questions if you would like. And I'll just take a pause for a moment before to see if there's any general questions.
Any questions? No, looks pretty good.
The, the format's all the same. Okay, so maybe just jump to the next steps. I think one of the big asks here or, you know, for direction, and apologize, I didn't have a chance to confer with General Manager Barrett this morning. But it's the last item, the strategic, the strategic planning for this year, this fall, because I think the last time we had this was two years ago, was in the fall of twenty-two. And I think two years is, you know, I think the pace that we've adopted, you know, I think since COVID. So again, you know, if, you know, so this is just something for the board to consider, whether, you know, there's any direction that you would like to give us, you know, in terms of, you know, having something for this fall. If so, then we can start, you know, putting together the board package to retain our consultant, Ed Means. If not, I think we can not do that.
I'd skip it.
Skip it, yeah.
Skip it.
So this would be.
We've already spent it all.
Yeah, this would, this would be the plan that would become effective July first of twenty twenty-six, if I recall.
That's right, it's every other year now.
Two years away.
Two years away.
So we would meet in the fall, we'd be able to come up with the projects, put it in the budget for fiscal year twenty-six, starting July first, twenty twenty-five.
We have so many projects that are already on the plate.
I agree.
You know?
Okay.
I, I feel like, I mean, it's been a good process, but I feel there's a little bit of, you know, kind of searching for what should we do next? And we already have, you know, we need to digest what we've already got on our plate, I think. There's a lot there.
Well, we do have ERP, which will be very time-consuming for the entire staff as we try and work through that configuration and, and, and development. So, yeah.
That was the one I was thinking of, Jim. Because Carrie's here, I'm thinking of those pipes over at Talibor. If we have extra money, it's going, it's gonna go there.
I agree.
I agree.
Staff focus on.
I agree.
Okay.
What we've got.
Yeah, yeah.
I agree, we just, we can internally summarize those, get the, get the stoplights set up for that. I love that, red light, green light, yellow light. Yeah, very visual, I agree. I'm sure we'll have enough to keep staff busy.
You know, I. Your analogy is nice, but I think more like that python that eats the pig, you know? Yeah, and, and you really don't want that pig coming back up. So I think we need to, let's, let's digest the pig. That's how I feel.
Okay.
Hey, hey, John, I have a question. Robert.
Yes, sir.
The, under additional unanticipated work, the damage repair from weather events, is that ongoing or is that future? Or what, what are you, what is your intention to include that?
Oh, you, you mean the status update on those?
Yeah.
Well, they weren't, you know, within the strategic plan necessarily. And I would leave it to, you know, the staff who are working on those to provide, you know, the status update unless the board wants to give a different direction on it.
No, okay, I just, so it's there just as a note that it's part of the effort that staff's involved with.
Right, that was just simply highlight, you know, some of the unanticipated work that had come up, you know, since the strategic planning process. Again, you know, the strategic planning is more for planned work. And then, you know, obviously, as we know, I think, you know, a lot of times the planned work doesn't always kind of go the way that we think it does. I mean, we can.
No, that's funny.
Okay, sounds good. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Robert. Good deal. Board General Comments, Director Nelson.
Uh, no comments this morning, thanks. None for me, John.
None?
No?
Okay. So I missed the last meeting. I was really having an amazing time. It was a very small three days on the Colorado River. The real trip is more like ten or fourteen days. But it was great just to be there. I've spent so much time of my life involved in various ways with the Colorado River, and I had never been on the river. I've been to the river, but I've never been on it, on a, you know, on a, on a boat. And it was very special. It was really cool. Yeah, I mean, you know, flows were kind of low to middle. And, but you wouldn't know that. I mean, it's, everything seemed normal. You know, they have the, it just, it goes up and down based on how much power they need to generate. So you can see kind of these tides of three or four feet, you know? And, and it moves quite a bit, you know, over the hour or two, if you watch it. But we had a great time. It's beautiful there. It really is. I mean, how many people have been on the river? Have you, you've done it, Peter, right?
So I have not been on the river between Powell and Mead or through, oh, I'm having a crap.
I mean, I was up on Virgin Gorge with you, but that was, that was way up there.
Yeah, so I, and I, yeah, so I've been on the Green River way up there too as well. And I've done the Yuma, basically the Yuma Imperial Dam, all the way up to Hoover. And I, so I've done that, but there's not a lot of rapids or anything. It's just pretty flat. So I need to get up there too, and I'm pretty jealous that, that you went.
Yeah, it was, you know, I just, when I saw the opportunity, I jumped on it and, and now I'm thinking, because we were only on the lower one-third. I'm thinking, you know, really need to go in at, at least ferry and, and do the top part.
Do the whole ten day.
Yeah, or at least do seven and get out where we got in.
Yeah.
And I, so I'm thinking about it. If you want to go.
Yeah.
Let's go. Yeah, and, and. Yeah, and, and sleeping by the side of the river and it just was really special.
Uh-huh, yeah. Did you have, um, any interesting guides or, or, um?
Yeah, you know, there was, one of them was very experienced, like thirty, uh, Justin was his name, thirty plus years. You know, these are on the motor rafts, right? This is not the, the oars. There was no oars or paddles or anything.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and he was just really great. And he told stories of. Yeah, I think he read the Emerald Mile probably twenty times, cause I'm rereading it again and. And, and his stories were almost verbatim from some of the stuff that was in there. Great book.
It is a great book. It's a fantastic.
Yeah, I'm literally rereading it, cause I love it so much. But then this other one, Swanee, he was our younger guide, you know, sort of the apprentice guide. And his first question to me, I guess he had had some, some guests from the Upper Basin. And he says, is the humpback chub just kind of a ploy by California to get more water? And I wasn't really, I'm not really well versed on the humpback chub.
Yeah.
Um, you know, the large mouth bass is the one that's more interesting. But, um, I, I need to research that. I'm sure Chris Harris has a, could, maybe I should call Chris and get.
You should call Jessica.
Jessica, okay.
Jessica Newworth, yeah, she is, she's, uh.
She's the humpback chub person.
She is, yeah, yeah.
So, I mean, you know, you think about this, when you see the water here in the valley, it's, it's almost mind blowing that. It traveled from there to here. And it's really what's making this valley, you know, we always talk about it, but, but to actually see it and touch it and be in it and. You know, I mean, we are so fortunate. The, I, I, I mean, our number one, our number one. Important thing that we need to do, we have a lot of important things, is to be good stewards of that. That water right and that resource.
So do we need a strategic plan for that?
We, we know it. We know it. I mean, I, I think it should be in our mission statement. I mean, it's, it's that fundamental to what we do. And I know we have other sources of water and all that, but it's, it really is the thing, you know?
I understand that Ed Luna did the mission statement that we currently still use.
It's a very good mission statement.
I'm sorry.
I think you were the one that developed, you were part of the development of the mission statement that CVWD currently has. Is that correct?
Uh, if I might, uh, all I did was kind of make it a little brief for it, with about a sixty-eight word mission statement.
To meet the water-related needs of the people through dedicated employees providing high quality water at a reasonable cost. Yeah, it's really good. And I'm not saying edit it, but, cause it is.
With, with Colorado River.
Yeah, I know. Well, it's implied, right? I mean, it's in there, but.
This board in the last eight years changed the, the bottom at a reasonable cost. Did we add that on?
No, I don't think we did. It was there. It's a, it's a great mission. Yeah, I mean, it's right on. But anyways.
Yeah, so that, that's really cool, John.
Yeah, it was really cool. So, yeah.
Was the, was the water, uh, pretty muddy or was it clear or, uh, on that reach? What, what was the water quality?
We got really lucky. Um, the guides said they were expecting it to be brown. And it wasn't. It was clear.
Okay.
It was beautiful.
Yeah.
And, you know, we'd stop at the camp and you'd see all these, what are they called? Razorback suckers?
Yeah.
All the suckers that, they almost look like trout. I mean, they're about the same size. But they're everywhere. I mean, you'd look out into the water and there's twenty of them right there, you know, and they're like that. Yeah.
Cool.
Wish I had a fishing pole. I didn't.
Yeah, you better catch those.
Yeah, no, it was, it was pretty awesome. Pretty awesome. Okay, so, uh, I'll call Jessica about the, uh, humpback chub.
There you go.
That's it for comments. Do we have any board requests for future agenda items?
John, I should have mentioned this under, uh, general comments, but, um, I see that we've nailed a meeting date, I think, for the, Ranch Mirage two by two, which there, they should be hopefully happy with. Um, but I also like to, if we can, press for Cathedral City, uh, two by two. There are two or three major issues that I think we should be talking with them about directly. So if you're having problems connecting with them. Then let me know.
Yeah, that, thank you. Um, on that, June twelfth with Ranch Mirage, do we have a time on that?
No, I think we're waiting on, on the time. So we have the date and we're trying to determine if the morning or the afternoon works best. So I, I did.
I blocked two different times on that.
Yeah, I s- I believe I sent two tentative codes for you.
I think I responded.
And we're, yeah, you did. We're just waiting to hear.
I mean, if we had a, if we had a, if we had the ability, I would much prefer nine AM instead of the afternoon.
That's fine.
If that's possible.
I'll, I'll try.
If that's, yeah, see if you can push that through, yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks, cause I'll, I'll be there at nine. Board meetings? I have a couple of these. A couple of, actually, that I did not attend. This April twenty-fourth Golf and Water, I, I did not attend. And also the May thirteenth Desert Values Builders Association. I did not attend. Just to get those off of there. But then, yeah, I, it's probably already been reported on the April twenty-fourth. We had an Agro Caliente Principles Meeting. With all the usual stuff there. April thirtieth, I did an interview with our auditor. Um, just to ask me a few questions about our internal controls and whether I'm aware of anything weird. I didn't, I had, it's good. And then on May eighth, we had a pre-meeting on the Agro Caliente Principles Meeting that was set for the twentieth. We did that. That gets us to the May fifteenth Colorado River Board Directors, Nelson and Estrada.
I wasn't there. I was there and, uh, it was a, uh, it was an informative meeting, um, for. Um, a number of announcements were made and I don't have them here with me, but, uh, uh, I'll try and remember all of them. But there was really good work done on the supplemental environmental impact statement was approved for the twenty, from now until twenty twenty-six in this interim period. So a lot of the, uh, actions being taken by the states. To conserve water are covered through that, through environmental purposes. Uh, so that's really good. And then the other, uh, good announcement was that the, um, uh, habitat. Uh, let's see, no, what, what, how's, what's the word? The, um, the multi-species habitat convers- conservation program. Was approved through twenty twenty-eight. So that's really good news in, in that those two environmental reports, uh, have been completed. You know, Jessica is involved in those, uh, uh, primarily from the Colorado River Board, uh, Chris to a lesser degree. Jessica, that really falls within her job and, uh, but that, uh, multi-species habit, that's a big deal. Because it, uh, it provides environmental coverage for, uh, QSA, for, uh, these, uh, management actions. Between the rivers. Uh, we talked about the Lower Basin, um, uh, plan that's out there. Uh, that really, it kind of fundamentally changes how the river is managed in terms of a elevation-based, uh, system. Between the two reservoirs to a, uh, holistic, uh, volume base, uh, system, volume-based, uh, management scheme. And allows, uh, reclamation to do what they want with the elevations, but that the, uh, allocations are based on. Uh, the storage, uh, management, uh, the storage levels of not only the two lakes, Lake Powell and Lake Mead. But the federal lakes along the river in the Lower Basin are Havasu and Mojave. And then in the upper, Upper Basin are like, uh, Flaming Gorge, Blue Mesa, some of the, those are, a couple of the bigger reservoirs. So it, it really is a more holistic management scheme and so, um, uh, you know, we discussed that. And I think that's a, that's a good plan. Uh, it's one of the only plans out there, cause the Upper Basin's plans are really not. Uh, uh, fully, um, I, I think, uh, developed, so, uh, uh. Good meeting, uh, that we had. Um, also, there are some, uh, staff changes coming up. Uh, within the board that'll come out in the next couple of months or so, so.
Good, thank you.
Okay.
Uh, what's next? Disadvantaged communities on the fifteenth?
Yeah, that was our usual bi-monthly meeting and, uh, I attended via Zoom. I think there was a lot of participation via Zoom. The big takeaway is that we've made a modification to the schedule, so we will be meeting still bi-monthly. But we are going to alternate between in-person and Zoom. Um, it seems that the Zoom participation has increased. So, we're gonna accommodate for that, but also try to have some space for, uh, an in-person meeting. So that'll. That'll set it up for at least meeting three times a year in, in person now, so. Other than that, uh, that was, that was pretty much it.
Good. Um, you have the sixteenth Solency Authority?
Yeah, that was, uh. Actually, I was not, I was not there.
And then you also had a video shoot for.
Yeah, so, but you know, we are in, uh, voting, uh, election, LAFCO, election. Election process and I think that voting ends on, on, uh, July second. Somewhere around there, maybe another thirty days or so. And so as part of that, uh, we updated our, our video. We, we had a video that we put out, uh, to all the special districts that have a vote on that seat. So we had done one a year and a half ago and we, we updated the video, quick, quick, short video, about a minute and a half. Uh, kind of asking for the vote, uh, asking for support. And so we, we met with staff to do that.
Uh, twentieth Agro Caliente Principles Meeting, Mediation Meeting.
I was not being able to attend.
Yeah, so we covered some. A lot of items there. More meetings to follow. May twenty-first, uh, we had a study session. The participants are listed on the budget. Um, May twenty-first through twenty-second, CSDA Special District's Legislative Day.
Yeah, so that, that's part of the reason why I missed, uh, the Principals Meeting and the study session. I was on my way to Sacramento. I was in Sacramento and, uh, I'd never been to a special district. Uh, conference. It was somewhat of a small conference, day and a half and, uh. I wanted to go up there to get to meet some of the other special districts, um. And see what that was about and, uh, it, it was pretty interesting. The first day there was, uh, a, a big legislative. Overview of a lot of bills that impact special districts. The big one that, uh, stood out that I haven't, that I, I was like, oh, that sounds pretty, sounds like a big deal. Um, what are they calling this? They're calling it, and I wanted, I took a picture, cause I wanted to make sure I mentioned it. They're calling it Initiative nineteen thirty-five. And, um. Currently, it's being, uh, sponsored by big corporations. Um, it's, uh, hit at the ability of the state from the state level down to local government. To generate revenue through like taxation. And, um, governors come out against it. I think Jerry Brown's come out against it. But it, it's very close, I, so it's gonna be on the ballot. And, and I had never heard of it, but the way they presented it, it was like the number one thing that special districts want to. Focus on fighting against. So I thought I, I'd bring it up, um. You know, other than that, there was a lot of other, uh, a lot of other, uh, laws that are beat, that are moving through the legislature. Related to employer, employee relations. So it's getting pretty heavy on, on, uh, a lot of that stuff. A lot of stuff on special districts' ability to im- collect impact fees. I think there is a, a want to try to promote housing by allowing impact fees to be deferred. Uh, things of that nature. So, you know, a lot of good things for our lobbyists to kind of be on top of. Other, the, the other big thing that we did was we spent the whole afternoon. Uh, making the rounds with the, with, with the, a group of senators and assembly members. So, uh, we were broken up, broken up into teams and we had a schedule on, uh, when we had to go to an office. Present ourselves to that office, uh, give them a packet of our legislative priorities. And it was almost like speed dating, like with, uh, with the assembly members and the senators. So, so, uh, cause it was very quick. It was, I mean, I think we had like fifteen minutes. I mean, you sat down. You said, these are the priorities. This is how it impacts special districts and then move on to the next one. So, uh, my group met with the Senator Kelly Sayarto. He's from Senate District thirty-two. And then we also met with the, the, uh, Office of Steve Padilla, Senate District eighteen. And then, uh, I did spend some time with Assembly Member Garcia. Um, I spent, you know, both days that I was there and we were, uh, keeping tabs on our efforts with chromium six. Uh, so I was able to meet with, uh, his office and Josh Tuker, who's the Chief Consultant on the Environmental Committee. Which, uh, they were able to, uh, help us set a meeting, which I, we have a meeting today. Uh, so that, that, that should be a big meeting and, uh. We've, we've been pushing for some, identifying some concerns that I think as the office and the Enviro Committee. Consulting go to communicate with, with the State Water Board. The State Water Board has kind of came back to say, eh, we could take care of that administratively. We don't need a, a bill. So that's kind of been the, the, the constant over the past few weeks. And so the meeting with the State Water Board is to say, well, well, how? You, you know, you, you, you keep saying, we can take care of that administratively, but we haven't heard how, when, who do we call? Where do we apply? And so I think that's the, the focus of today's meeting, Zoe. Is, is we want to get those details, uh, from them. Well, how do we do that? It's kind of the big question. And so, uh, so I think today's meeting's gonna be, be good. Um, and that was what we did at that, uh, special districts.
Good, yeah. Um, I had one more that, to add. I think Casla was on it also. May twenty-third, Zoom that we did with, um, on Agro Caliente with DWA. You were you on there?
Yeah, yeah, we were there.
How'd you get on that one?
No, I did. You were there in person.
No, I think that one, you did miss that one.
Okay, then, yeah.
That was that three PM one. Now that I think about it. Anyways, we had that to, to, uh, coordinate with DWA on, um, next steps.
Yeah.
For our next meeting.
And I did have one more.
Go ahead.
So on the twenty-sixth, which was Sunday, uh, I met with the Assembly Member, uh, to continue to coordinate. About today's meeting and so, uh, again, Zoe, uh, he, uh, his intent is also to. Try to figure out. How exactly is the Water Board proposing to address our concerns administratively? And to get some answers and if we could, if we feel satisfied, then I think. He knows that we don't need a bill, but that's to be determined.
Did you talk to him about getting some state funding?
They can't find funding and they, they're chopping them off.
Tell him to.
We, we need some funding.
Shake the tree.
That is, that is the next project, is to get the state to pay for this.
Where's Armando? I think we need to send Armando to Sacramento.
We do need to send Armando to Sacramento.
Fast for a hundred million.
Any other meetings?
Yeah, I had a five, uh, on May seventeenth, um, I attended through Zoom, the site's, uh. Reservoir, um, Project Authorities Meeting. Robert's on the Reservoir Committee. Uh, he asks, always asks some great questions, Robert. Good, good job on that. Um, as you know, that's a significant project for us for. Good good job on that, um as you know, that's a significant project for us for imported water supply. As um Jerry Brown, the Jerry Brown, uh says, uh the light at the end of the tunnel is getting brighter. So um a good meeting, they're still working on the uh obligation and benefits contracts that we'll eventually have to sign and quite frankly, I I think that there may, there may be some, uh we're in at twen- we were in originally at fifty thousand and we're in at uh twenty-five right now, and so uh you know, at that stage, there there might be other other potential.
We're in a ten.
We're in ten?
Yeah, I think we're in a ten.
Well, maybe we can get back up.
I think we were originally in at twenty-five, yeah.
Okay, twenty-five to ten, that's right.
Yeah.
That's right, Matt's in at fifty, so.
Well, at one point, they're in a fifty, we don't know whether they're.
I know, right, right, so uh so uh you know, and that will be an actively managed uh water supply. Uh whether we delegate that to, whether Robert does it or delegate it off to Matt in their systems and so forth. Those will be interesting questions for us to to uh work on coming up, so good meeting.
Any others? I thought you said you had five, you didn't have.
No, 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 just uh on May seventeen, five seventeen, so.
Oh, I got you.
Just one.
I got you.
Yeah.
Any any other meetings? Is there a motion approved per DM for the meetings reported on?
We'll make a motion second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pass five oh. General Manager report.
I have nothing to report this morning, sir.
Thank you, Council.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, uh just on the item that the Vice President just mentioned. Regarding the i- initiative on the ballot, actually, the Special District Association, Aqua. The County Association of Counties, League of California Cities, um have all been involved in that process. Uh is actually in it uh been taken to the California Supreme Court on the issue of whether it would be constitutional to even include on the ballot. The arguments on that matter were uh heard in the early part of this month. And there needs to be a ruling by the California Supreme Court in June to determine whether or not it goes on the ballot in November. The reason we haven't talked about a law here is it is pretty uh comprehensive. It would have an impact on fees that are currently in place. It would have an impact on the standard by which public agencies need to prove that their fees are reasonable. It would change the standard and voting requirements for special and general taxes. All things that uh would have an impact on all uh California cities and special districts that impose these fees. But the issue now is trying to address to the California Supreme Court through your lobbying arms whether or not it it's something that should be on the ballot. Most, the usual court would say, well, let's see what the voters think first before the California Supreme Court would interfere. Or stop it from going on the ballot. But we will let you know if in fact it it does proceed to the ballot. It it is so comprehensive and so controversial and and various groups that are in favor of it or not that we really, or not we, but uh the sense has been to focus through the league and Aqua and special districts to make the best case uh possible that this would not be a manageable way to deal with fees. And at least not, that it should not impact fees that have already been passed. Uh so it's a it's a larger issue, uh but it is something that, as you heard, is being addressed for now at the lobbying arms of the public agency. So with that, I'll just stop for today.
Thank you, thanks, Jim. Uh any departmental reports?
Yes, sir, we have one. Scott Burt's gonna come up, uh there was some discussion during the last two weeks about a potential bill, AB twenty seventy-nine. And whether or not uh CVWD would be taking a position. It is consistent uh with our policy statements, uh because it deals with groundwater, we just didn't know whether the board had a sense of how they wanted us to proceed.
Yeah, and thank you, Jim, and this was originally gonna be an action item on the agenda after your comments at the last meeting, Director Nelson. So for those of you who don't know, twenty seventy-nine would impose permit requirements and prohibitions on groundwater extraction for large diameter, high-capacity meters. And in the legislation, that's defined as eight inches or greater and pumping two acre feet or more annually. The status of the bill is that it passed the Assembly and it's now in the Senate Rules Committee where it's waiting, awaiting committee assignment. So if this goes to the Natural Resources and Water uh Committee, then that would, our Senator uh Steve Padilla is on that committee. So this may be the time to engage um while it's in the Senate. And I think you've you've pointed out that this bill impacts the CVWD service area because it prohibits the um permit approval for a well within a a high-capacity, large diameter well, within a quarter mile of any residential uh or domestic water system for one, one person or more, so it's pretty restrictive and and so um there are other requirements in the bill. But I just wanted to get a sense of, you know, is this, we have a the policy platform, I'm not asking for a decision, but just kind of like we'll probably be taking a position on this now that it's in the Senate. And there are times when we don't take positions on bills when they're in the House of Origin, sometimes they get killed, we work through Aqua. They get put on the suspense file, so um this, sometimes we take positions if they have a big impact and sometimes we monitor them to see what happens.
Sometimes we have other asks.
Right, yeah.
On that, Scott, I I think the fact that the district policy is for Colorado River customers to have backup wells in place. I think that is enough for us to be very concerned about this. It's not a prohibition on new wells, but it's darn near, it's pretty close. And and there's another, there's another element which deals with subsidence, and I know we don't have that problem today, but and that's probably where a lot of other ag areas are are more concerned. But but it was like one or two inches of subsidence or something, I guess, it's not a lot.
Yeah.
It's just another way to prevent wells and it seems to me that the district, CVWD's been pretty good at at explaining why a one-size-fits-all doesn't work. And and I think that our own situation is a is a good example of why we should be able to to make decisions on on wells that that aren't constrained by these kind of rules that may not make sense here.
I agree. Okay.
Yeah, I uh I it is a, my sense is that that it is a one-size-fits-all approach, this bill and and what I'm hearing is that this is meant to address some bigger issues in the Central Valley perhaps. And uh that aren't, for whatever reason, being addressed through Sigma. Uh and so I think this is a bigger hammer, maybe a direct hammer in those regions, and so I think we just need to find a way to get ourselves out of that. But it does seem to, at least the comment that I heard from our Assembly Member is that it is uh uh something that the Governor's Office is interested in. And so because I think, again, there's issues out there in the Central Valley, maybe.
Yeah, and the whole idea of the two thousand fourteen Groundwater Sustainability Management Act was to have local control of uh of uh water management, of groundwater management, just like we've been doing here since nineteen early nineteen hundreds, right? And so it's kind of bringing up to speed a lot of other districts that that haven't had that. So that's been the process, and then that process is working out well when uh the Department of Water Resources does not, uh you know, shows that groundwater sustainability plans are inadequate. And then they move on to the State Water uh Pro- State uh Resources Control Board uh in terms of placing uh these uh kind of well, these, you know, areas that are having issues into a probationary status which then would provide for the State Water Board to come up with an alternative plan for that district, so there's a whole process in place and to now inject different types of legislation that would subvert you know, the process that's going on, that's working well, uh at, you know, in terms of process and uh addressing groundwater overdraft, uh you know, I think it's like too soon to interject uh in there, so.
Yeah, I I think that's been my, that's been my general comment is Sigma already takes care of all the right.
Right.
Like the process you just described. There's no, there's really no need for you know, impacts other folks that might might be doing a good job.
Right, right, and there's there's six basins in the in um at the board's desk right now, one's been put in probation, another is gonna be heard uh soon, and uh there are others, you know in the queues.
And I tried to explain that to the Assembly Member about this bill just last week. And tried to urge him not to vote on this, and for whatever reason, the information that he's getting, he believes it has nothing to do with us. It won't impact us at all.
It does.
And I tried to explain it would, and he just, you know.
Yeah, I I think we got to it too late, maybe.
Well, maybe we didn't have the the backup, you know, I didn't have enough facts, maybe.
So.
So the, my understanding is that the Author's Office circulated a map that showed the impacted areas, and it was primarily the Central Valley. And you know, in our case, that's just not the case, and so it sounds like the direction we're going in is an opposed letter, not opposed unless amended, which is opposed. Yeah, okay.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
It's easier just to pose than you have to worry about how.
Can you copy the board on that letter?
Yes.
Please, thank you.
Thanks. All right.
Get nervous, Jeff.
No, not me. This is your work, you're getting your closed session, right?
All right, at this time, the board will recess into closed session to consider the items twelve, A, B, D, E, F, and G. And then we will reconvene and report following closed session. Well, the regular meeting is reconvened, we do not have any reportable action from closed session and with no further business, we're adjourned.